Welcome to the South Burlington School Board meeting. And we will start with comments from the public regarding items not on the agenda. Yes?
Yes, my name is Sheldon Katz. I just want to point out that I'm wearing a gold star like those worn by the Jews in Nazi Germany because the board has adopted antisemitic, antisemitism and the symbol of antisemitism. So, please embrace that. I do have a couple of questions for Mr. Young and for the board. So, Mr. Young, do you remember a while back when you were reporting to the board on measures to promote diversity, inclusion and equity and you were telling the board that PWA, the Public Issues and World Affairs class was going to be watching the documentary called The Thirteenth? Do you remember that?
I don't remember my particular report, but...
Okay. You remember it generally?
I've talked about PWA before to the board, I'm sure.
Right, okay. Because this is Jan-, this is in the other, this is a report from the other paper and I'm sure it's in the video of the meeting too. This is January 26th, 2017, in the other paper. It says that you noted that students involved in high school classes such as PWA have an opportunity to address current issues in the context of historical significance. Students recently watched the documentary Thirteenth which addresses slavery and its connection to mass incarceration today. They also shared the documentary publicly in a well-attended event organized by the Student Diversity Union. This type of learning does a larger sweep according to you, Mr. Young, on diversity, equity and inclusion. That goes beyond addressing the competency alone. Does that refresh your memory?
Seems accurate. Sheldon, I don't have it in front of me, so...
Okay. PWA, I have a copy for you. If you like. I did not print out the photographs, but in any event, so you were reporting to the board that that PWA, and PWA students were watching this documentary to further their understanding of, to further their education in diversity, equity and inclusion? Is that fair?
This is just a comment period, so if you want to make a comment...
Sure, sure. Yeah, yeah. Well, I'm just trying to get everybody's understanding. So, in any event, so Ms. Donovan and Ms. Watkins, I believe, teach PWA, right?
I believe that's correct.
Okay, yeah. So, I went and met with them after I read this and I asked them about this because I watched The Thirteenth and I went and asked them some questions about this. And you know what they told me? They said that they were displaying or that they were showing this documentary, The Thirteenth, not for diversity, equity and inclusion, but because it was such terrible propaganda that they were using it to, for their, so that their students could better understand and make use of media and be wise media consumers. So, those are kind of inconsistent. You're bragging about promoting diversity, equity and inclusion and the teachers who are teaching it are saying, "No, this is propaganda." Believe me, I watched the documentary myself and Joseph Goebbels would be proud of it. So, which one, were you telling the truth or were they telling the truth? Which one is lying?
Again, it's not a question and answer, but we'll take the feedback.
I know, but we can kind of, is someone lying?
I'm not going to respond, Sheldon. I'm not, you know, recalling the exact conversation. I think I was specifically talking about PWA and the importance of talking about public issues and world affairs and using a variety of forms for students to evaluate that. So, again, I'm not, I'm not recalling all of the conversation. Again, this is a comment period for you to provide some comments on items that aren't on the agenda.
So, based on this report, and we can go back and look at the video too, and based on what Ms. Watkins and Ms. Donovan told me, those two statements are inconsistent and somebody's lying. Either the superintendent is lying or the teachers were lying to me. In either event, I'm asking the board to investigate that matter because I don't think that the board wants superintendents who don't tell the truth and they don't want teachers who don't tell the truth to parents of students that attend this school. So, I'm asking the board to take a look, to investigate that and hold, and have during your meetings to have, to question Mr. Young and to question Ms. Donovan and Ms. Watkins about which one was telling the truth and which one was lying. Because that's important, don't you think?
We'll take that under advisement. Appreciate the feedback.
Okay. When do you think you could have a meeting on that?
I don't know. I'll talk to, I'll talk to the appropriate folks, including Mr. Young, and find out what kind of follow-up there might be on that.
Okay. Because I will follow up on that.
As well as the rest of the board.
I will follow up on that. I think everybody here, I'm sure every member of the public and every taxpayer, every student, every parent needs to be able to rely on the superintendent, needs to rely on teachers, and when someone's not telling the truth, they need to be held accountable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Other comments from the public regarding items not on the agenda. All right. Seeing none, any amendments to the agenda?
No.
All right. We'll move on to, we have the opportunity to recognize one of our board members, Steve Woslawski, this evening. So, I would like to take a moment and recognize Steve's contributions to the board over the past several years. Thank you, Steve. What's that? Hey. It's been, it's been a pleasure serving with you. "In appreciation, Steve, your faithful, willing service and positive approach to all challenges are greatly appreciated by your colleagues. Your commitment to the students and the community are admired by all. We thank you for your dedicated service to the students, staff and the schools of South Burlington School District." And I have this plaque to present to you on behalf of the superintendent and the entire board. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
David, get in here.
I know. I wanted to take a quick picture.
Well, I want to get his family up here too. So, Kathy and the boys, could you come up?
Come on up.
Wow, wow.
A little co-conspirators.
Oh, wow!
Steve, you can hold that. That's your dad to keep alive in his office. And Kathy, this is for all the hours that you've allowed Steve to be with us.
Stand all together right there. You too, Elizabeth, for one.
Thank you.
All right. Awesome. One, two, three. Great. Awesome.
Thank you all so much. Thank you, Steve.
Yeah. A little round of applause for you.
Now, back to work for you.
Yeah, that's right.
We're going to make you really work this last meeting.
Yeah.
All right. Cole and Arnell, our student representative report.
So, a few things. Firstly, I like mentioning a lot of the stuff going on during Black History Month. And so, recently and including tonight, the Boys and Girls Hockey Team have been playing games that have been promoting the fight against racism and they've been highly advertising them. There's been great turnouts to those games and I think that's awesome that they've been using their platform in that way. Also, today, students, mostly from Student Justice Union, visited the Vermont State Education, Board of Education in Montpelier and they held a meeting with them in which they talked about ways that students can be involved and make decisions about racism. And I thought that was really important and great. Also, a congratulations to Diana Gregwire, who is the Vermont State Gymnastics Champion. Today, Spain and German students left for their trip, which should last about two weeks, so that's fun for them. Also, there have, oh, I think, I think you're going to talk about the band and chorus, yeah. Next week is vacation through March 5th, which is going to be good. And then, also, talent night is coming up in mid-March, so after we come back from the break, students have been working hard on that and that's always a fun annual tradition. And then also, early voting for annual town meeting is on March 5th. The ballots are available in the city clerk's office for early voting. There is a shorter turnaround this election, this election, so if you would like a ballot mailed to you, please contact the clerk's office at 846-4105 stating your name and the address where you would like the ballot mailed. And then also, there is a budget presentation and candidate forum on Channel 17. The budget presentation begins at 5:25 PM and the candidate forum begins at 6:00 PM.
And that will be on Friday?
Yes.
The recruitment tour was yesterday, which was where SBHS Chamber Singers and Wind Ensemble went to all three elementary schools to show them the choral and instrumental programs and try and get them to join when they come to the middle school. SBHS students took the 2019 Youth Risk Behavior Survey this week. The SBHS student to represent us at the Poetry Out Loud Competition will be Vera Eskaha Heis, who went all the way to Nationals last year and I believe was in the top 10 of the nation. The student-directed one act will be the whole shebang and it will be the week that we get back from break, so that will be the Thursday and Friday evening and then we will be performing at the Vermont One Act Festival on the following Saturday. The Young Republicans Club and the Young Democrats Club went to the State House to meet with Governor Phil Scott. I believe that was yesterday. And, okay, hang in there. "The Agency of Education is conducting an integrated field interview tomorrow. A team of educators will, from surrounding districts and agency of education staff will be in the buildings. They will be meeting with groups of students, parents, support staff and teachers, having a tour and visiting classrooms and learning spaces. The integrated field review is part of how the AOE monitors implementation of the Vermont Education Quality Standards and is based on a continuous improvement model. The data collection focuses on five EQS, the Education Quality Standards, domains which are academic proficiency, personalization, self, safe, healthy schools, high-quality staffing and investment priorities." I'm done.
Pretty good.
Thank you.
So, that's, again, as Cole said, that's a tomorrow event, so we've got about 18 folks coming in to sit with various folks throughout the district. The only thing else, the only other thing I would add is I wanted to just publicly welcome Corey Burtnick, who is our Communication Coordinator. She's been hired. She, as you know, has been an active writer for the other paper and she's on board and has been working around communications already. And finally, we did receive a letter from Senator Bernie Sanders. He was here visiting our after-school program. He went to the Chamberlain School and so he's just provided a letter. I'm happy to pass that around. He's just saying thank you for the visit and a picture that came along with it so you can look at it. And I will be passing it on to the Schools Out Group, which is, who's pictured there. So, thank you for the announcements.
All right. Thank you. All right. We'll move on to the next agenda item, City-School Collaboration.
So, we have been working with the city. Our last meeting was last week and really just working out the specifics associated with the Rick Marcock Property Land Exchange. And we've got some things going on there around clarification associated with that MOU. And so, we're working through that, particularly one area is the stormwater area and we're really trying to understand the legal requirements for stormwater. So, that was the focus of our meeting. We do have one, another meeting scheduled next week. And again, these are a little bit different than our, than our normal meetings because we have had regular meetings, well, we have had meetings in the past, Elizabeth and myself along with Kevin Dorn and Helen Reilly. So, these have taken on a little bit of a different focus because there's some work that needs to be done associated with that property.
So, do we, do we have a calendar of regularly scheduled meetings at this point?
No, I don't, I don't. There's no printed calendar. It's kind of been, you know, just finding those dates. And I don't know what will be the progression forward. And again, I'm essentially doing a little bit of both my report and the City-School Collaboration, trying to be really timely here around items seven and eight. Thanks.
Anything else on City-School? All right. We'll move on to the Superintendent's Report. And maybe, you might want to put some specificity on sort of what you're waiting for in terms of the stormwater?
Stormwater. So, stormwater, there's a lot in the state, as you know, around stormwater mitigation. So, we're currently, we recognize that rules are likely updating and we're wanting to make sure that those rules are, we're abiding by those rules around stormwater mitigation. So, we're waiting for an engineer's opinion around kind of the obligations that we would have on our property or properties related to stormwater mitigation. So, we have a, an engineer that's currently working for us to look at obligations and requirements associated with stormwater. First and foremost is the Rick Marcock Property, but will also provide us with information around the other four properties as well. Thanks, Elizabeth.
Anything else on 180 Market?
No.
Okay. All right. We'll move on to Master Planning and Visioning.
So, today, we had a working session. A larger group of folks came together for a good chunk of the day from nine o'clock until about one o'clock. This group looked at all of the options. So, all of the options, again, the board was updated on five options, I think, just quick overview at their two meetings ago. So, the nine, there's currently nine, eight options that are, have been provided. And the, the group also has an available tool, a criterion tool, to evaluate those options. And the group heard all the options, had a fairly lengthy conversation around what each option would do and a lot of clarifying questions, and then completed the criteria sheet or in the process of completing. I don't know if everyone was able to complete it. And that's where we currently are. The, Dorn, Reilly will take that feedback and will then come back with a more focused effort and will likely not be the eight options, but we'll focus that down and we'll provide some next step direction back to us and yourselves around where we're going to go from there.
They actually laid out, like, do you mind if I go through the bullet point, just the bullet point process they laid out? So, they said that we're going to take all these evaluations that we're doing now. Simultaneously, they're working on cost estimates. I think they have enough information from us now that the cost estimators are going to start working sort of at the same time. Once the preliminary evaluation sheets are in and they've sort of tabulated all those results, there'll be another meeting with the bigger visioning group, the Community Visioning Group, that came together and gave us initial feedback. And they'll present those eight options to that group. And then after they've had some feedback from them and incorporated it, there'd be a wider presentation to the general public. And then they'll sort of take us through an option selection process, sort of narrowing down those options. But as David said, I think it will be pretty clear, some of them will not make sense once we start to get the scores back on these criteria sheets as well as...
That was one of the questions I had is will, will all eight make it through even to that original community group?
I, they didn't specifically say that today. My guess is probably not because I think there are going to be some clear winners. Once you start to marry up costs with how things meet our educational goals, there are going to be probably a couple of clear ones in there that don't meet all our educational goals and might be more expensive than some of the others. And those, I would think, would be kind of silly to present to the community because they just don't make any sense. But I can't speak for Dorn and Reilly and what they, what they envision that to be. They may present them just to say, "Here are some that we've evaluated and we've eliminated them for this, this and this reason." But my understanding for now is that all eight are sort of, are going through the process. And then, once there's sort of been feedback from the visioning group, from the general public and, and the options have been narrowed down, then it will be really to David to sort of make a recommendation to us as, as a board as to, you know, which option he thinks we should go with. So, lots of feedback into that process, but...
Was there, just a quick question. Was there any discussion at this stage on the costing methodology? Is it, was there, in the past, I've seen sort of a square footage estimation?
And that's what we're going to have. Because basically what they showed us at the Steering Committee and, and what we're working off of right now, the way they describe it is basically one step up from a bubble diagram. So, they, they took us all, especially at these principals workshops, through this exercise of wanting to make sure that we have the adjacencies right, to make sure that we're meeting educational goals. So, these types of classrooms should be near, you know, this other type of facility. And, and the stuff that they presented at Steering Committee looked a lot fancier than that, but they want to keep reinforcing that this is one step above a bubble diagram. So, an actual project, this would be sort of a rough estimate cost that it would be based on and we'll have to start making some decisions and all of that. But a real project would, you know, things could still be moved around. Things could be added in or taken out or swapped from one place to another. So, it is still at the level of, this is the general square footage, these are the types of classrooms. So, obviously, a science classroom is going to cost more than just sort of a general classroom. So, it's not just one random square footage methodology, is my understanding. There's some more nuance in it, but it's not going to have, you know, we are going to have this exact square footage of cafeteria and the fit out of the cafeteria is going to look like this. It's not going to be down to that level in this type of project or at this, in this phase, phase two of the Master Planning and Visioning. That would be once we've kind of decided an option and a direction we want to go, then we'll get into those really deep details and the design and, and those kind of cost decisions will have to be made then.
So, I don't know if there's questions, you know, from other board members or...
Any other questions? Any questions or comments from the public? All right. We'll move on then to ballot items. Agenda item 10.
So, I think you're aware of the ballot items that are out there. I did bring a sample of that. I didn't give all of your copies, but we obviously have the Article Four, which is the City Charter Amendment. Again, I'm not able to speak specifically to that. Article Five, which is around support for raising the age to purchase a tobacco product in Vermont from 18 to 21. Our Article Two is there, which is our school budget. Kind of going backwards, I apologize to that. Article Two, city budget. Article Three, on the sales and rooms and sales tax, asking for voter approval for that. And obviously, we have our City Council School Board Directors as well. So, I know that there's been some conversations specific to the article related to the tobacco product, Article Five. And I think Alex maybe wanted to speak to that or board members may want to speak to that a little bit.
Sure. If you'd like, I'll start.
Thank you. I think I've been the catalyst for getting this on the ballot and I've been the, pretty much the main proponent for that and that's okay. But what I've, what I have learned is that the more people know about it, the more people tend to support raising the age. And one thing I've learned that's, that's pretty important, or at least vital, is that nicotine addiction can impair the development of a young mind. Now, the last part of, of humans' brain to develop is called the frontal cortex. And if you want, you can take your hand and your middle finger and you put it up on your forehead like that and the space between your finger and your thumb is your frontal cortex. And that is the part of your brain that's responsible for what psychologists call executive function, which means learning to think several steps ahead. So, if you, if you face a difficult problem anywhere in your day, it affects how you, whether you react to it, you know, impulsively or whether you take the, take the time to plan for it. And what, what the, the numbers show is that kids who do start smoking before they've graduated high school or at a young age do not do as well later on in their life. And there's loads of, loads of empirical evidence for that as well. You look at workplaces, they're smoke-free. So, if you, if you enter a workplace as a smoker, you're already having to take these breaks and you're missing out on the ability to contribute. If you go to college, a lot of colleges are smoke-free as well. So, you enter college, if you're a smoker or a vapor, you're already somewhat of an outcast and that's very hard for a kid who's, you know, finding themselves where they fit in society at age 18 and 19. And that puts them at a tremendous disadvantage and that's one of the reasons why I support raising the age from 18 to 21. Another reason is that if you don't start smoking before age 21, you're pretty unlikely to start to begin with. So, all the health issues are, are there, but also the fact that you begin your life, life as an adult, not addicted to something, but also as being able to be, to fit into society a little bit better as opposed to having to go off campus, step out of the office and so forth. So, I've, those are some of the main reasons why I think that this is school business, not necessarily school business, but something that schools should be taking a position on because it affects the kids that we educate and it affects their future. And I'm going to, I'm just going to leave it at that. I hope to be able to talk about it more. And if anybody else wants to chime in, I'm appreciative. I don't mind being a one-man band on this, but, but I thank you all for your time. Thank you, Elizabeth. Thank you, David.
Thanks for raising the message, Alex.
Sure.
I'm glad at least one of my, one of my kids heard it.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
No smoking, right, buddy?
So, yeah, so...
There you go.
So, I'll say to the camera, "Please vote yes on number five." Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments on ballot items?
I have a question.
Yes, Arnell.
So, I turn 18 on March 3rd. This is March 5th. I was just like wondering how you can register to vote and if that's too short of a turnaround? Because I'd obviously love to vote, but a two-day...
You can do it right up to...
Yeah, I believe it's same-day registration.
Okay, so same-day registration.
Yeah, literally same-day registration.
Mr. Burke has been pretty informed and, you know, providing a lot of that information too, so Arnell, that can certainly...
And if you don't have the information, the person to call is Donna Kinville, who's the city clerk and she's in charge of all the elections and all that. Her number's on the city website. You can certainly call and ask her, like, the best way to go about it and what makes her life easiest, because I'm sure same-day voter registration is probably not the easiest thing for her, but it is the law, so...
Yeah, so I don't know, when you, when you turn, I was on the 3rd, is that right?
The 3rd, yeah.
Happy birthday almost.
Thank you.
Again, what day does that fall on? The 3rd?
The Sunday.
Yeah, so obviously, the next working day, you probably could go in, as Spurkert said, and see if you could get that done. Or you could do it on the same day, but probably easier to do it.
Yeah.
Again, good information. Good question.
So, if our budget passes by one.
You don't know that. We won't know that for sure.
Okay, Elizabeth?
Yeah.
May I hijack the, the subject for just a moment? Happy birthday, early, Arnell. Another reason that I support raising the age from 18 to 21 is that a lot of 18-year-old high school students are able to buy cigarettes and vapes and then provide them to their younger students, such as the person on your left, which I is, I strongly disapprove of, but that is a problem that, that I'm hoping that this law will help fix. Thank you.
The only thing I'd say to that is I've definitely seen that happen. So, and when people turn 18, that is definitely a thing going on.
So, it's a problem.
I wouldn't say it's a huge problem, but it's definitely something I see, you know, when somebody turns 18 or whatever.
Really?
So, yes.
Well, thank you for, thank you for that testimony. I appreciate that.
And then, if I may, just like, I'm a dual enrollment student, so like, I also, I attend a college course and it's at CCV and that's now a smoke-free campus and it's, they had a whole big thing saying if any student goes out there, they will have to have a talking to with the administrations there. So, I would say it is a disadvantage for those students who are exposed to that.
Yeah. Thank you, Cole.
All right. We'll move on to Agenda Item 11, Budget Communication.
So, we have, we've had a variety of things going on around just communicating the budget. I've had the opportunity to talk with all of our, our school staff. When I say all of our school staff, I may have not hit all of them. Our administrative assistants, these are areas that I know I need to do better at, nutrition service, transportation, so we're working on that. But in general, we've hit, I've gone to all of the schools and talked with certainly the teachers and many of the support staff. In addition, I've had the opportunity to be at the, some of the PTO meetings and also talk with them. So, we've done Orchard and Chamberlain, as well as today, I did the Young at Heart, the Senior Citizen Group as well. Again, just giving them information, answering questions. In addition to that, we have the Channel 17 live, live program happening on Friday evening, 7, 5:20?
5:25.
5:25. So, that's currently, and I know both Arnell and Cole are coming. And so, we'll be, we're in the process of needing to maybe communicate a little bit more about how we want to do that. So, we'll need to connect a little bit, maybe tomorrow, if you have some time, to just talk a little bit about that and we can maybe pull Elizabeth in, in, by phone. But that's kind of where we are with budget communication. We've posted up, again, Amity has been helpful to post up some of the questions that have been coming in. We used to have the FAQs kind of embedded in the report. We've gotten some good feedback on the, on the budget book, but we also know that some of the, the questions have remained, so those got posted up actually, based on the questions that we've been having on our website. So again, I don't know if there's specific questions around budget communications from folks, but...
I do have a couple of questions. One was, is Cory going to be involved at all, or is it still too early days, is she still sort of getting up to speed? Or like, what's her role going to be in, in budget communication?
Yeah, so I haven't specifically tasked her. Again, it's been onboarding her, and she did attend the, the master planning and visioning work. That's one area that we want to make sure that she's getting up to speed on. Beyond that, it's been really just looking at, you know, some of our webpage work, and she and I and Delina are talking about that, around updating some of those things and looking at that presence. So as far as, there's some integrated stuff in that with, with budget, but most of that's already been posted up and mostly about making it cleaner a little bit. So there's nothing specific that I've asked her to put out an article or anything like that.
Okay.
I just, I had two more comments. I don't know if you want to go?
I will, go ahead and I have a comment after.
Yeah. One was, when I was reviewing what our budget ad was going to be, I was under the impression that we were doing an insert. And that's why I sort of said, narrow it down from like all this information that we had down to two pages, because I really thought, you know, why are we putting in a two-page insert in the other paper? When it came out, it was like two full pages actually in the paper, which I do think would have had enough space for a lot more information in the paper. And so I just think, you know, in future years, if we really are going to go to the expense of having two full pages in, integrated in the paper, we can do a little bit more. I, and I apologize for the role that I had in, you know, sort of narrowing that down to what I thought were the essentials if we were just going to have it on, you know, two sides of an eight-by-eleven paper. The other thing is, one thing the city has done this year, and I think this is partly because they have a communications person, is rather than just do one budget ad, they, they did their budget ad and then they've had sort of smaller ads in each successive paper. And I think that's helpful, because I think that people who aren't regular readers of the other paper will see that, it will jog their, their memory to like go to the city website and, and get more information or to follow up a little bit if they have a question. And I'm, I'm just a little concerned that, that, you know, I'm, I'm not monitoring social media to try to, you know, get in the middle, but just to sort of get a sense of, of what's happening. And I do think there's some confusion about, as, and it's the usual confusion, it's the usual confusion about how much the budget is going up versus how much taxes are going up. And there's always that, that discussion. It's confusing for people. Why can taxes go up in a year when the budget's actually flat? Or why are taxes going down in a year where the budget is going up? Or, you know, why is the budget going up this much and taxes are only going up this much? It's really confusing for people. And, and the frequently asked questions are always, always good. I'm just wondering if in future years, we need to, to sort of have sort of more of a spread-out presence in the other paper or some other place where people can sort of just get exposure to it.
It's a good idea. Again, some of this, I, I don't know all the details, but I know the transition from, you know, some of the other paper transitions and clarity around what we could do in the page, you know, was, was a little bit of that as well. So we, we were working with them and they've been extremely helpful, but there was a little uncertainty there when we were trying to get that all to, to come to fruition, so...
Yeah, and, and my comment might, would really be if, if, you know, up, leading up to the election and the vote, that if there are some commonly asked questions or concerns that we're getting from community members, and I think, Amity, you may be in a position to be hearing what some of the common, or requests for information are, that maybe that is something Cory could get on in terms of responding on social media to some of the common questions. And, and I think ones I've been seeing are really that, that disconnect between tax rate, the top-line rate, and, and understanding, there was an interest in getting a reconciliation comparable to the city where there are other source of revenues, but we don't really have that same phenomena. And in fact, our revenue, revenues are down. So the reality is, we're, we're asking for something that's making up some offsetting revenues plus some operating expenses. So, but maybe...
Yeah, to push those.
Consider looking at, or considering the commonality of some of the questions we're getting and maybe having Cory do just some little blurbs on social media or Front Porch Forum or something that really just says, hey, this has been a common concern and we just want to address it here, if, if that's something she's able to do.
Yep.
I also feel like there needs to be a little bit of an actual, more words, as opposed to just more tables thrown at people or more data thrown at people, that sort of put some perspective on people or, people on social media are shouting about, you know, why is there a $2 million budget increase? Like, that $2 million is stuck in people's heads in a year where the, the student population's not going up that much. And there needs to be a little bit of a philosophical discussion, I think, about the fact that we're in a people business and we run, you know, a, a business that is, it, it, people have gotten upset about it being eighty percent staff cost, but that's, that's what we do. I mean, it, it is teachers, you know, and that's our work. And those costs go up year on year. And, and that's part of it. Part of it is mandates and we can explain, you know, how special ed funding is changing and, 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 you know, affecting our revenue side, you know, those kinds of things. I feel like there needs to be a little bit more language around why these numbers are what they are, because I think we have a pretty good summary, you know, in the budget book where we outline in, in very short, you know, not quite full sentences, you know, this is what this number is and why. But I feel like maybe people aren't going to go all the way into the budget book to find it, and that's why I'm wondering, like, Front Porch Forum or, you know, some other place where people can get it sooner rather than later, to sort of just explain ourselves, basically.
Amity and I talked briefly about this around some of the, kind of these questions that have been, those, not many, but few that have been coming up, so that maybe, maybe on Friday, when we do the live broadcast, we also can maybe bring up, and these are some of the top three or something we'll, we'll talk about that are coming up and be able to respond to those questions. Here are the three questions. We simply let, put them out and we do that. I'm, I'm in agreement too, that we, we also push those ones that we're hearing a lot about. For instance, why is the expenditure budget doing this and the tax rate's doing something different? You know, some words to it. So makes sense.
Any other comments or questions? All right.
Thank you, Bridget.
We'll move on to agenda item twelve, policy work.
So we have F1 in here, which is about education records. This is the first reading. And again, this is to get out there in front of making sure we're staying compliant. I might encourage just board members to, to review it, read it, and we'll bring it back for the second reading. I propose you have, unless you have questions now that you'd like to know more about...
And there are no proposed changes in here?
Correct.
From your standpoint?
Mm-hmm.
Just out of curiosity, why does this one not look like our superintendent interpretation?
Because this is a mandated, this is a mandated policy that comes out of, that's a required and mandated policy.
All right. Any, any questions from the board on this one at this point?
Just a real quick question. When it says education records, does that mean transcripts, grades? And does it, does it include things like expulsions, student activities participated in?
It, it's whatever we currently have as a record for student.
That's in the footnote.
Yeah. So I, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so this will come up for a second reading, probably at the next meeting.
Correct.
All right. We'll move on to negotiations update. Bridget?
We met with the teachers just on Monday, and there's another meeting scheduled for March eighteenth. We met with support staff most recently on February eleventh, and there's another meeting scheduled in...
March, I think, eleventh.
March, and, March eleventh.
Mm-hmm. March eleventh.
Yeah. And that's where we are, moving ahead.
Ongoing. All right. Legislative update. We don't have our legislator here.
We don't. And I, again, Alex already talked a little bit about one of those, and I don't, this is the latest, and I think a lot of you have this probably already, but this is a legislative update that comes out of V S B A and V S A. So again, I don't know, some of these you may just want to peruse. I'm assuming maybe you've seen them. And again, I think this one is probably, did not pick up the, because it's February nine, Alex, I don't know when the particular legislative bill came to be around tobacco and, and that one. I don't know when that one was activated.
Been sent to committee as of this time.
So there's, there's a lot in here on Act Forty-Six mergers. There's some real energy around delaying some of those. And there's obviously individuals who did a lot of work to merge and not wanting to have that, so it's a pretty, pretty communicated and contested piece around Act Forty-Six. I can't really do it justice if you ask me any really specific questions that doesn't involve us directly, but obviously, our colleagues, it does. You've heard a little bit of, I don't know, did you have a question?
Well, I, I had a basic question. Before these get to crossover, is there anything you feel like the board should be considering weighing in on at this point?
I could certainly do something for you in a more thoughtful way than I could tonight. I would tell you that, you know, lead testing, lead testing in the drinking water, while I think it's important, I also have questioned, why aren't we doing, you know, air quality testing, CO2 testing, asbestos, radon, PCBs? And so I think what we're going to find is what's going to be the resolve. So I, I wonder about more, again, this gets back at facility, kind of oversight, and I wonder kind of the validity of the ability to make corrections on this. But I'm not saying it's not important. I just, I kind of wonder. I'm happy to give a little bit more of a reflection on ones that I think are important and get that back out to you.
I think that would be helpful. Any other legislative concerns or issues from the board or the public? And when is crossover?
I don't know the date.
Can't remember either.
I was relying on Martin.
He's legislating. He can't be here to follow up with him.
I, I'm, I'm, I don't know. I'd be guessing, and that's not good, so...
Elizabeth?
Yes.
I mean, I've obviously spoken about it before, but I, I believe that the Tobacco Twenty-One legislation should be in here.
Yeah, I, I think because when it was printed on February nine, I don't know what, where that was, Alex. So I, that's why I mentioned it before. I didn't want to make it sound like this report excluded. I don't think it was, I don't know when it initially made it.
Yeah, it was, it was initially introduced almost right away at, I think it was S-85 or something like that.
Okay.
And what we...
And did, and do I recall that it passed the House?
In previous sessions, it did pass the House. Last session, it failed in the Senate by thirteen to sixteen.
It hasn't passed the House yet.
It ha, no, it has not. Not this session.
So I didn't see it in here reflected, but again, we'll get another, I'll get some, another update. And again, this is the one that was last done, either through V S A or V S B A.
Okay. All right. We'll move on to other paper articles. I think we had a good discussion at the last meeting and, David, we did put some topics in place for the next three other paper issues.
Mm-hmm.
And then kind of a date to be determined on master planning and visioning. So at this point, we have Alex writing on substance abuse. You can change that topic. That's sort of a placeholder on the topic.
Okay.
And that will, that will actually run, have to be submitted prior to the referendum vote. So...
Oh, absolutely, well, yeah.
Yeah, after the vote.
February twenty-eighth.
Yes, yeah.
So, yes.
So you won't have results of the referendum?
Right.
Okay. And nor will it influence the referendum, because the vote will have occurred at that point, but it will be educational at that point.
Yes.
Then the next one we had is, we shifted Martin to legislative priorities. I think that's close to the crossover date. And then we had a good discussion about our student reps really looking at safety and security measures and kind of what's been done over the past year and how it impacts students and culture and so forth.
Throughout March, I'm continuing, we'll all have a lot more data on what I was talking about last week or last meeting of what I've been working on. So hopefully throughout March, I'll have a lot more information and then I can, we can work on that.
And then I think we thought that, we don't have an author on this, but basically, one-eighty market, street or airport noise, at that point, we'd have good updates on both those in that timeframe. What's that?
Brian, let's start assigning them.
Yeah, right, right.
There you go.
Right.
So unless you have...
No, I think that looks good.
Pretty well.
Yeah, and I, I'm going to be working in, when we talk about some of our upcoming agendas, I want to give you some updates on the Market Street, but that's not connected to the other paper necessarily.
So setting the agenda for March sixth. Are we carrying that policy over, second reading?
Yep.
Is it on here? I don't see it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Some other policies. We're trying to really, try to stay on time with some of our updates, so please bear with us. I do think under the superintendent's report, this will probably, I'm going to just note that I'll probably do an update on the soundproofing at Chamberlain under that one. And because of our audit, I'm going to suggest that we move the item fifteen, the monitoring, our two-point-four financial conditions, because the audit work is just, we don't have it. So I move that one to the twentieth with the hope that we'll have that data that will help us complete that. So we'll move that to the twentieth.
And will we have enough information to do, do we do our election results at this meeting or the following one?
We usually do them at the following one, I, because, well, I have the results, but I usually do the more voter work. And that's one that we've had kind of participation. Two things. We, we usually give just the results by area. So yes, we'll have that, but we won't have more of the activity specific to, you know, you know, the, what we started, actually, Martin had started years ago, and we've kind of kept that one going. I won't have that one.
Okay. Any other comments on the March sixth agenda? All right. Any future items that can be taken off or ones we need to add? I noted that Arnell or Cole said the youth for survey was just taken. When do those results typically come in? Do we know?
So tomorrow for students have to take it, that didn't do it this week, so it's still being kind of done. And then I know my peer leadership teacher was saying how, who's also a health teacher, she's the one that kind of reviews and is part of a committee. So I would assume probably a few weeks, but I don't know, because of vacation.
Yeah, I feel like it might be months.
It's months, yeah. I mean, Arnell's really optimistic, and that's great, that data coming back.
I think the two thousand seventeen survey was not released until calendar year two thousand eighteen, so we're, we're looking at more like nine months.
Well, maybe we can just sort of, whenever the date is, just get it on to the board review calendar at some point. Might be more available?
Well, they've done it digital before. No, yeah, it's just, but the compiling, compiling of the data and whatever.
You're suggesting it might be available earlier.
Yeah.
All right. We've got some meeting minutes to consider. The meeting minutes of February fourth, which was a working, or actually was a negotiation sessions. Any changes on that? That...
And there's two of them, because one, there was one was in the morning and there was one in the after, in the, in the evening.
Well, then the guests would be wrong. Yeah, these are, these are sw... Okay, so we'll make that change.
Yep.
All right. February sixth was a regular meeting? Any comments or changes? I had a really modest one, just a spelling...
That you're reading it?
I had a really modest one, just a spelling issue. No, it was just on page four. It's probably wrong, it's bad to spell communication wrong, I guess.
Where was that on, for page fours?
On the title. That's the slightly idiot savant thing.
Communication at the same time.
The February eleventh was a subcommittee meeting. And actually, we don't, did we get the right date on the, on the actual negotiations meeting? That would have been the eleventh, correct? No, I'm sorry, this, the eighteenth. Eighteenth. We don't have, we don't have the meeting minutes for the eighteenth. Okay. Got it. Okay, so we'll make those corrections on the other ones, and sign off on those.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Any questions on Agenda Item Nineteen, AP orders twenty-nine and thirty? All right. Any other comments from the public? Steve, I'll take a motion from you to adjourn.
So, no...
Do I have a second?
Thank you, Steve.
It's been a pleasure, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourned. Thank you.